Well, good evening. Welcome to the evening session of the May 23, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting. And we're gonna do something unusual tonight. I'm gonna lead, I'm gonna do the prayer. And then Commissioner Weatherford's gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right.
So, I hope that's all right with everybody. And if it's not, it's still okay. If we'd all stand, please, if you're willing. Heavenly Father, thank you for the gift of America. Thank you for the gift of Americans. Thank you for all you do for this wonderful country. Thank you for all you do for those who have given the full measure of their life so this country may be free. May the power of the Holy Spirit be with us tonight as these elected members of this body called Cobb County get together to represent the people. May we receive the wisdom from the power of the people. May we give it in a way that is respectful of their commitment to us and our commitment to them. We lift up spoken and spoken concerns in your hands tonight. And as always, we ask for special blessings who wear the uniform to protect our freedoms. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I apologize for the slight delay in this meeting. I was coming from another event tonight at 6:00. And I realized I was a little bit late leaving that meeting, but I wanted to speak to the special group of people that were attending the academy, the police academy. And on my way up here, I was being followed by a Marietta policeman. So I had to follow the speed limit. So, but we're here safely, and that's what it's all about. I realize that sometimes traffic can be very frustrating. But I try to remind those that our number one purpose is to make sure you get to your destination safely. And what I saw tonight, we'll have no problem doing that in the future because we have a terrific number of men and women who wear a uniform to protect our freedoms here in Cobb County. So with that, first thing I'd like to do is we have a, I'd like to, we have an addition to the agenda. And I'd like to bring that before the board and ask them to make a motion to amend the agenda, to reflect that. So, let me find it here. All right. So what we have here is an agenda item to, we're gonna add to, I'm gonna read my script here that Millie's provided me. Once again, I managed to mess up. On tab number six, on number 19, we have a, I'd like to add that to tab number six. I had to make it item number 19. And it's a, to authorize a settlement of a workers' compensation claim on the behalf of Deborah Rodriguez. The board discussed this yesterday in executive session. And now I'd like to make a motion to, for the board to authorize a settlement of this workers' comp claim on behalf of Deborah Rodriguez. Now, I have a second and discussion. Call a question? And pass this five to zero. So, thank you. So that, we're gonna start tonight with tab number three. And we have a number of presentations to make tonight. And again, I ask for your patience, but these are, this is our opportunity, we only get twice a month to do that, to recognize some really incredible town we have in Cobb County. And so tonight, I'd like to have Commissioner Bob Weatherford start by recognizing the 2017 Georgia Recreation and Park Association Class A State Track Champions.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask our Director of Parks and Rec, Mr. Geese, to come forward and lead that, and Commissioner Cupid, I'll come down and have a little talk.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. There are few things more rewarding than when we recognize our young people who have excelled in their educational, their civic, or athletic endeavors. Unfortunately, our society typically focuses only on the negatives. But we're here tonight to recognize the positives. Track and field programs are offered to our youth in Cobb County by several different organizations. However, at the end of the spring season, all of these athletes come together under the Cobb County Parks umbrella to compete against other athletes from across the state through the Georgia Recreation and Park Association. The first step is for them to place in the top three of their event in the Cobb County qualifier. Two-hundred-and-ninety-six track stars qualified this year to represent Cobb County at the GRPA District Five Track Meet. The next step was for the athlete to place in the top three in their event at the district event. Cobb County had a hundred-and-seven youth ages seven to fourteen advance past district into the GRPA State Track Meet that was held May 5th and 6th in Augusta. This year, that included one-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty athletes from all across our great state. Of these one-hundred-and-seven, we are presenting to you tonight those that rose to the top by running faster, jumping further, and throwing it farther than any other competitor in their age group from across the state of Georgia. So I'm gonna call their name out, and they're gonna come up just like Camden and I talked about a little while ago. And they'll receive their certificate. The first is a group that won a four-by-one-hundred relay. Ms. Camden Curry, Ms. Juliana Holman, and Ms. Mina Lovelace. Did Kyrie make it? Kyrie didn't make it, okay. These young ladies won the state title with a time of one minute, 7.95 seconds. Okay, the next competitor, yeah, just right over there. The next competitor did a hat trick while she was in Augusta. Anaya Fraser, nine- and ten-year-old girls. Come on down. Anaya won the two-hundred-meter dash, the four-hundred-meter dash, as well as the softball throw. Don't listen to anything he says, he'll mess you up. Elona Kish, thirteen- and fourteen-year-old girls. Come on down, Elona. Elona competed in the thirteen- and fourteen-year-old girls in the thirty-two-hundred-meter run, and she set a new state record this year. The next competitor, Ms. Jada Marsh. Jada could not be with us tonight, but her mom is coming to accept her award. Jada competed in thirteen- and fourteen-year-old girls in the shot putt. Jada also competed in the discus throw and set a new state record of seventy-two feet and two inches in the discus. The next athlete is Ms. Amaya Wilcox. Amaya competed in the thirteen- and fourteen-year-old girls four-hundred-meter dash and won her event with a time of fifty-nine point zero seven seconds. Okay, that's it for the beauty. Now we got the brawn. For the guys, Zachary Graves, come on down. Zachary competed in the seven- and eight-year-old boys. He won the softball throw at ninety-three feet, eight-point-two-five. Tre'Quan Reed, come on down. Tre'Quan competed in the nine- and ten-year-old boys in the shot putt and threw that heavy Devin Clark, come on down. Devin competed in the eleven- and twelve-year-old boys in the four-hundred-meter dash and set a blistering time of fifty-eight point eight-five seconds. Xavier Jackson, come on down. Xavier competed in the eleven- and twelve-year-old boys also, but in the standing long jump, he jumped eight foot, seven inches. Some of those guys at the NFL Combine didn't jump that far. Sullivan Shelton, come on down. Sullivan competed in the thirteen- and fourteen-year-old age group in the sixteen-hundred-meter run with a time of four minutes, fifty-five seconds. We'd like to thank you Commissioners for joining us in celebrating the accomplishments of these Cobb County young people. And we look forward to having them back in the future as you accomplish even more in your athletic careers. Thank you. We'll get one picture.
to Mr. Stephen Ewing.
Steve, come on down. And I know your wife Terry's here and Hallie's here. All right. I know, we also, we're gonna call the bankers down in a second. Now, Terry was not told before she got here that we were gonna do this. Turn around. So, before I read the proclamation, you've all heard of six degrees of separation. Well, what Steve didn't know, Terry knows because we had the conversation, we only have about one or two degrees. Because what you're gonna find out is that Steve grew up in Montclair, New Jersey, played football. And when he was playing football, he had a teammate who was a senior who happened to have the same last name, or same name as I do, Bob Ott. And that year, when I was a senior and he was a senior, they beat my high school and ended our nine-year undefeated streak. So normally, normally, Westfield and Montclair do not have conversations. But tonight, we're gonna talk about some other types of accomplishments. Now we're gonna talk about football. So, I'm gonna read this. There's a lot of really interesting stuff in here. Whereas Stephen R. Ewing was born and raised in Montclair, New Jersey. He is a graduate of Delaware State University. Upon graduation, he entered the automobile business. Steve now resides in Atlanta with his wife of twenty-two years, Terry, and his children. Am I allowed to say how old they are? Okay. Twenty-year-old Hallie and seventeen-year-old Stephen. And I imagine Stephen's just like my son, he's off doing something else. Right. And whereas Steve began his career at Apple, Chevrolet, and Fairlawn, New Jersey. And then in 1989, he left to open his own dealership, Crossroads Ford in East Orange, New Jersey. Ford Motor Company purchased the franchise from him in 1992, and he became an interim operator with the company and was responsible for managing their franchises. In 1993, he left Ford to open a new dealership, Champion Fordland, with the support of Ford Motor Company's dealer development program. He was able to pay off the Ford stock in his dealership within four years. He later opened Champion Nissan in Scranton, Pennsylvania, and Champion Lincoln Mercury in Hazelton, Pennsylvania. In 2002, he sold his dealerships and purchased Wade Ford, which he continues to operate out of Smyrna today. And whereas, Mr. Ewing's professional accomplishments include number of FMMDA, and I'll let you tell us what that is, Ford Motor Dealer Association. Past president and chairman, top one-hundred Ford dealer in the United States in 2016, nineteen ninety-five through 2006, top profit dealerships. President's Award in 2003, 2005, 2006, 2007, 2008, and 2009. Dealer Innovation Award with NADA. Partners in Quality Award, top twenty-five dealers for commercial contract volume in 2013. Top ten in the region in certified pre-owned sales in 2014. First in e-commerce sales for March of 2014 in the region. Second in the Atlanta region year-to-date for Ford and Ford Credit Commercial Business. Ten nationally, tenth nationally in commercial truck sales in 2013. First in E-Series Sales, commercial in the Atlanta region. And from 2002 to 2014, multiple national minority dealer top-profit awards. And, there's more. Whereas, he has deep commitment to Cobb County community. He's a Campbell High School Athletics Program, participant South Cobb School Athletics Program, Cascade Community Services, Kennesaw State University, Smyrna Spartans Youth Sports, Riverwood High School Foundation, Fulton County Board of Education, Clark Atlanta University, Sophie's Choice Foundation for Spina Bifida Research, Center for Family Resources, Atlanta Diaper Relief. I know you like that joint. Delta Sigma Theta's Minerva's Foundation, Guns and Hoses, Mayor's Cup, Atlanta's Young Generation Movement, and Atlanta Mission Now. Therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize Stephen Ewing for all he continues to do to enrich Cobb County through entrepreneurship and community involvement. We thank you for your service.
I just wanna say very humbly, first of all, thanks for this honor. I've been in Cobb County. I moved my family here in 2002, and it's been an incredible opportunity that God gave us to have an opportunity to purchase that business. Here with me is Randy White, who is the Fleet Manager of our operation. And Randy is recognized as one of the top Fleet Managers in the United States. Wade Ford is, recently, were recognized as the number-one volume Ford dealership in the state of Georgia. So we're very proud of that with retail and fleet. And Randy's been at the helm of that. Dave Tackett is the CFO of our company, and since Dave has come in, Dave's been able to keep me on some, a steady fiscal course, for the most part. And he's allowed us to reinvest, helped me reinvest in our franchise, and we've expanded our business in Cobb County. But what I really wanted to say as we close this, and this is my wife Terry, you introduced, but I have partners in this town. And when I came to Georgia, I was able to come down here and be so refreshed at how people received me. And one of the things I want to recognize is, who's bank comes to an event like this?
I was gonna say, all the people that came here to support Stephen. Come on up.
Please come up. Please come up, please. That came up here to support Wade Ford, please come up here. Because these men, and where's Jackie? Jackie, you here? McMorris? We do a lot of things at the Maple House also, but come on up, please. Because for me, this represents partnership, this represents people who look well beyond anything and look at character. And I look at character. And the people standing in front of me have made a tremendous impact on the one-hundred-and-fifty employees that I represent at Wade Ford, that come there every day to make that dealership one of the best in the nation. Not Cobb, not Georgia, in the nation. And with your help, we do a lot of things with the Parks Department and with what you do down at the Maple House, and I'm grateful for that relationship. My bankers here, Clark Hungerford, Joe Daniels, Dan, all of my, all of these gentlemen walked into my business one day and said, hey, we wanna do business with you. And I, oh, wait a minute, who are they? And they've become the best of partners, and I'm grateful to have you as part of helping me grow our business in Cobb County. And all I wanna say to the Commissioners is, everything you're doing to make this business environment work for us in this, in the Cobb County, as an entrepreneur here, as a business person, a taxpayer, the work that you're turning this county and watching it evolve in the short period of fifteen, sixteen years that we've been here, watching what's happened here, is an amazing accomplishment. And that has to do with dedication, and I sit back and watch it. I had, I came here with numbers to tell you all the different places that we do business and we sell cars to, and we provide police cars to municipalities here within this county. And it's really important to me that we have this relationship. The Cobb County Police are the best, the best, and they're partners, and they come by. And I just wanted to share with that, that this honor today is, I wanted them to come because, this is not about me. So when I bought the franchise, I bought it from a guy whose dad owned it. And he said, Steve, I'm just a steward of this business. And I kinda look at that the same way, that I wanna be a good steward of this business so that it can be around for generations for other people. Maybe this generation, but we'll see. But anyway, I wanna thank you again on behalf of my family and behalf of the one-hundred-and-fifty employees at Wade Ford for everything that you guys do to help us maintain and stay in business.
There you go. Come on up. Picture.
Good evening, everyone. Well, again, this year, I have the honor of presenting a proclamation to the East Cobb Quilters Guild. This is their sixteenth biennial quilt show, and it will be Thursday, June the eighth, ninth, and tenth, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, at the newly renovated Cobb County Civic Center. So I'll read the proclamation, and then y'all can introduce yourselves and say a few words to advertise your program. Whereas, the East Cobb Quilters Guild will present its sixteenth biennial quilt show, known as Georgia Celebrates Quilts, on June 8th, 9th, and 10th at the Cobb County Civic Center. Featuring more than three-hundred-and-thirty quilts from around the state, Georgia Celebrates Quilts will showcase twenty-first century quilting from traditional bed covers to quilted art pieces. And whereas, the East Cobb Quilters Guild was founded in 1982 to promote and perpetuate the art of quilting and to foster community goodwill. The Guild sponsors lectures, workshops, exhibits, and carries out the community service projects. The Guild seeks to encourage friendships and fellowship within the Guild and to build meaningful relationships outside the Guild. And whereas, as part of this mission, Georgia Celebrates Quilts is the largest ongoing juried and judged quilt show in Georgia, drawing over twenty-five-hundred visitors to Cobb County from the metro area and the southeast. Members of the Guild are nationally recognized quilt artists, journalists, designers, and teachers, whose work is regularly seen in print, online, and in person. Their quilts from this show go on to win national prizes. And whereas, members of the East Cobb Quilters Guild donate hundreds of handmade quilts, pillowcases, and placemats to Cobb County charities each year and seek out opportunities for community involvement. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby congratulate the East Cobb Quilters Guild on their upcoming show, Georgia Celebrates Quilts, and encourage them to continue to promote the quilting arts and bring recognition to the great quilts stitched here in Cobb County and across our state. This is the twenty-third day of May 2017. So, I would like to say, thank you, ladies. They do meet at my church, St. Anne's. I guess that's how I got you all these years. But it's an honor to present this proclamation tonight. And for the audience, if you've never been to the East Cobb Quilters show, it's truly amazing. Beautiful artwork, tapestries, quilts from, made by hand, and they're, it's just a beautiful work of art, and you won't be disappointed. So there's some cards in the back with the details of the show, the hours, and location and everything. So pick one up on your way out and be sure and go and see all the beautiful quilts.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your support in the art of quilting. It's not a lost art. It's something that's very current. We're very excited to receive this award. And as you said, this is our thirty-fifth year. We have over two-hundred-and-fifty members in the county. And we also do support the local charities, and we do community service work, which you've mentioned. We supply over three-hundred quilts to the DFAX children and Meals on Wheels. We provide over three-hundred placemats every year. And we also provide pillowcases for the cancer children. So, very excited to receive this award tonight. And I'm gonna let Lynn, our Quilter Chair, give a few more words about our very exciting upcoming quilt show. Thank you.
Thank you. Very excited. This is the sixteenth biennial quilt show. We are overjoyed, and we just wanna thank the Commissioners that we are now back at the Cobb County Civic Center. The renovations are gorgeous. It is a wonderful space, and we are honored to be able to have our quilt show there. And we are the largest quilt show, Guild-sponsored quilt show in the state of Georgia, and one of the largest guilds in the state of Georgia. So it is a real honor to be in Cobb County. We will have over three-hundred-and-thirty quilts that will be hanging at the quilt show. And I say they're quilts, they're really entire works of art. Some of our quilters are nationally known, and they do win awards at a national level. So we have extremely talented quilters here in the state of Georgia. I do want to wish that you will all come. It is June 8th, 9th, and 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the gorgeous, newly renovated Cobb County Civic Center that we are just thrilled to be with. And thank you so much. This is a high honor, and we are pleased as punch to be here.
And I would like all of you to introduce yourselves, but most of you probably know this lady in the red sweater from the third Tuesday of the month when we have zonings. She actually belongs to Commissioner Cupid, District Four, but she's also a member of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. So she weighs in on a lot of our zonings in District Four. So, Robin, we're happy to have you back tonight.
Okay, well, I guess I've been outed. Sorry about that. I was really trying to be a quilter tonight. But, no, I think I would echo everything that's been said. It's just a fabulous, it's a fabulous experience. So come see us if you like pretty things of all sorts. And it's great to be back home in Cobb County as well.
Super. My name is Linda Bailey, and my role this year is working with the vendors. And we have people who are in business, in the quilt business, and there's lots of related businesses from here in Cobb County, but really coming from all over the country. So it's gonna be a great show and a market. So we hope you'll be there.
And I'm Kristy Stevens. I'm first press president of the Guild. We also have the opportunity to buy lots of handmade items. So if you need gifts made by people that do small works of art or handcrafted items, it's the perfect opportunity to pick up gifts, very unique gifts. items, it's the perfect opportunity to pick up gifts, very unique gifts.
Thank you, ladies. And now we'll get a picture.
And our last proclamation tonight, Commissioner Cupid will be honoring Chapter 531 of the National Management Association.
Good evening. Tonight I have the opportunity to present a proclamation to the Lockheed Martin Leadership Association on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Whereas Lockheed Martin Leadership Association, Chapter 531 of National Management Association, joins chapters across the state in sponsoring the 35th Annual Management Week in America, June 18th through the 24th. And whereas with almost 13,000 members, the National Management Association is the largest nonprofit organization that provides leadership development opportunities to help discover, develop, and showcase talented management. Members represent organizations covering the entire spectrum of American business, industry, and public sector entities. And whereas the Association's mission is to develop and recognize management as a profession and promote the American competitive enterprise system. National Management Association is dedicated to managerial excellence as well as personal and professional growth. And whereas Lockheed Martin Aeronautics Company has thousands of members who are committed to inspiring outstanding leadership and cultivating productive workplaces. Now therefore, we the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim, June 18th through 24th, 2017, as Management Week in Cobb County, and encourage residents to recognize the lasting contributions that quality management provides to our community. This is the 23rd day of May 2017. Thank you. Give them an opportunity to address everyone. Let's take one more picture.
Sure. Hi, good evening. My name is Stacy Bosch. I'm the President of the Lockheed Martin Leadership Association, and I brought a few of my team members here. We want to thank the, the commissioners for the opportunity to recognize Management Week in America. This is a really big deal for us, falling under the National Management Association. So we get the opportunity to do a lot of things with our members at Lockheed. So we also like to ask you to join us as a community to also push that mission as well. So thank you.
I am Keith Charles, current Vice President of Programs with LMLA and incoming Executive Vice President.
Hello, I am Al Manning. I am the current Vice President of Professional Development for the Lockheed Martin Leadership Association.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rayford Horn. I'm currently the Associate National Director for the National Management Association. I am responsible for approximately nine chapters throughout the southeast.
Good evening, Board and everyone that's here. I am Terry Bartlett. I'm also with the Management Association. I am the Secretary for this year's Board of Directors, and really appreciate the award and everything that you guys do and allow for us to do in Cobb County, because we do a lot of activities here. It's really a great opportunity to serve.
Okay, Commissioners, again, thank you for, for recognizing these incredible young men and women. In case of Steve, old, oh, he left. My best line went out the window. Anyway, it's just great to recognize the incredible talents we have in this county, and I appreciate your patience, and as we bring forth and introduce both of the people who are watching us on Cobb TV tonight, the opportunity to, to show you the talent we have in this county. Next, we're doing Tab 4, and that's where we have a public hearing conducted by Dana Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman.
And Dana.
Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. I'm here representing the Fire Marshal's Office, the Public Health Office, and the Water Department as it relates to some code amendments that are being brought forward for consideration in this particular cycle. This cycle has code changes in Chapter 54, in 62, and in 122, which are utilities, health and sanitation, as well as, as well as fire prevention and protection. Getting into the codes, sir, I'm sorry, one more bit of information for everybody. This is the second public hearing that was being conducted on these codes. So at the Board's discretion, they may choose to approve these codes after the conclusion of your second public hearing, sir.
Thank you, Dana.
Starting off is Section 54-3 and 54-50. And this Section 54-50 is being removed, and the language is being moved over to 54-3. The rationale for this is changing the penalties section to be appropriate to the chapter, not just the article. So it's just, it's just changing that to make sure it's technically covering the whole section of Chapter 54. The second item is 54-51. This deals with life safety certificates of occupancy. And in this case, it's just clarifying that all types of construction activities are required to be approved by the Fire Marshal's Office as it relates to the health and safety codes, dealing with access and, and other things, and other items that they review as part of their normal procedures. The next section, sir, is 54-96. This deals with fire protection systems testing. And, and this particular, there was some duplication of, of wording in this particular section between A and B, and they're just taking out the items in A for and clarifying them in Section B. So it's not really too much change in this. It's just really making sure that it's not, it's being thorough throughout and removing duplicitous regulations. 54-100 deals with the fire action plans. This is in the definitions of fire action plans. Just clarifying that when you do have a, a fire alarm, that it needs to be able to have a means to verify the, what has triggered the alarm. 54-101 deals with fire alarm certifications, and this just creates some additional equivalencies that people can utilize in order to meet their requirements under the, under the life and safety codes as, as it relates to fire alarms. 54-102 deals with the inspections of fire alarms, and it just clarifies that there needs to be a fire action plan in the area of a fire alarm at the time of reactivation. 54-100, this deals with explanations of the powers and duties of the Fire Marshal, and there has been a change to this particular item that I'd like to read into the record because it was not contained in the revised Codeman Book that was distributed a, a few weeks ago. This is under 54-104, Item C, and the amendments are as follows. The Fire Marshal may promulgate procedures to enforce the fire alarm regulations contained in NFPA 72 and Section 54-101 of this article. That ends the items under Fire, under, under the Fire Marshal, under the Fire and Safety. This leads us into Chapter 62, which is 62-33. And this, there are a number of the, there are a number of the health rules from the Public Health Department that had dates on them, and the state updates them periodically so that our codes are never out of step with the date. We're just removing the dates and saying as may be amended from time to time, since the state is actually the ones who require these particular, these particular actions. And lastly, in Chapter 122, which is utilities, there is a change as it relates to the use of master meters in single-family subdivisions, which is removing a large section which the state is no longer requiring. With that again, sir, we had our first public hearing on the 25th of April. This is the second public hearing on the 23rd. I would advise you to please conduct a second public hearing on these codes, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you or the Board may have, and ask you to please consider adopting the amendments as revised.
Okay. Pam, did you get that revision, Section 54-104? Okay, good. All right. So with that, the public hearing is now open. I just want to remind any potential speaker that they have three minutes to address the Board, and you come to the Board, come to the podium, please give us your name and your address. And with that, I now to call this public hearing open. Does anyone wish to address the Board? Does anyone wish to address the Board? Joe, welcome. Are you addressing, are you addressing this specific amendments, this revision on public comments?
No, 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 I thought you meant the public hearing.
It's coming right behind us, so you can just stay right there. Just blend in the background there for a second so I confuse you with the, with the plywood. Joe and I are good friends. Anyway, does anyone wish to address the Board on these revisions to this, to the ordinances? Seeing none, I now, I now call, call this public hearing closed, and I would, I would turn this over, Commissioner, Commissioner Burl, I believe this is yours.
I would like to make a motion, sorry, that we approve the code amendments as presented.
Second.
Do I need to read the sections?
No, just as presented. That'd be, that's fine for the record. Dana, Deborah.
You, you may want to mention as revised.
I was going to suggest we might have said as revised, because we had that one period, that one section in there.
Second is revised.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the amendment, to accept the, the changes as revised, that we have a second and discussion, and call a question. And it passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Okay. Now we have, now we have, I don't think it's a big, we have already, how many speakers do we have? Four, okay. Does anybody have a problem with Mr. O'Connor goes first? He's an 80-year-old Marine, you know, who needs help. Harassment like camouflage is continuous, Joe, you know that. So what I'd like to do is for the remaining three speakers, if you just keep your seat, and, you know, I'll, I'll get you up here, won't, won't go against your five minutes, and I'll just, I think it's better if you just sit down, because that way if you stand, people behind you can't see you. So with that, Joe, you have the podium for five minutes.
Thank you. I'll repeat my name again, it's Joe O'Connor, and I live in East Cobb. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to take a minute to thank Mr. Rob Hosack, our new county manager, for returning to work to help keep our county on the straight and narrow road heading in the right direction. I applaud him for giving up his lazy boy chair while watching all his favorite sports on his giant TV screen and coming out of retirement to help run our country, our county. Thank you. Cobb County can certainly use Mr. Hosack's skills, experience, and talent. I feel confident that he and the county will have a long-lasting and perfect partnership. Thank you, Rob, for accepting your new assignment of managing the future of our county. And now, with all due respect, I'd like to make a serious suggestion to the Board for their consideration. Cobb's population is quickly nearing 800,000 people, which has more than doubled since our family came to Cobb in 1972, which is 45 years ago. Today, we still have the same number of district commissioners that we had in 1972. So now each commissioner has to serve twice as many citizens, along with twice as many needs for services in his or her district than the commissioners did in 1972. Because of the huge increase in the county population, now I believe is a good time to seriously consider changing the size and composition of the Board of Commissioners to properly deal with the challenge. Creating five districts would help reduce the population per district and allow each commissioner more time to better serve and satisfy their constituents. Additionally, each district commissioner will have a vote on the Board, while the chairman would no longer need a vote. I believe this is a win-win idea. Hopefully, the Board will find time to give my suggestion some serious thought. I certainly did. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you for your service.
The next speaker is Breonna Perkins.
And again, I'd like you to, just remind you to just give us your name and your address, and appreciate that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Breonna Perkins. I am a youth ambassador with We Drive and Riverside Winters Association. On May 13th, our organization won the Mapleton Day Competition and Community Grant. Also, thank you to Chairman Boyce and Commissioner Cupid for supporting the Mapleton Day event hosted by Amateur Advocates Association. We would like to recognize our youth at this time. Raven Rester will be graduating from Pebblebrook High School on Saturday, May 27th. Raven is an active member with We Thrive and Riverside Winters Association. We would also like to recognize Isaiah Hubert, who is graduating from Riverside Intermediate School and received all As this year. Also, I would be a senior next year at Pebblebrook High School in the Performance Arts Magnet Program. I am the captain of the Mighty Marching Machine Flag Line, a Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy member, and member of Student Government Association, along with stinking. Thank you, and have a nice night.
Thank you, and congratulations. Keep up the great work. Thank you for bringing her to Monica. Appreciate that.
The, the next speaker is Monica Delance.
Oh, well, there you are. Jumped the gun. Always good to see you, Monica.
How'd you know that was my daughter? Good evening, my name is Monica Delancy. Also, want to recognize Commissioner Cupid. She placed, it was a first or second in the 5K run. She's fast. I mean, when we looked up, I'm like, is the race over already? Because she, so congratulations to Commissioner Cupid for the Mapleton Day 5K run. And also...
That has to, I have to clarify, in my age group, in my...
Last Saturday also, the Cobb County Public Safety Department hosted the Community Safety Blitz. I know Chief Fryder is here tonight. Also, Smyrna Police Department and Fire Department's department as well, so just wanted to make sure we took note of that. Very nice event and very nice weather. But changing gears a little bit, I wanted to talk about opportunities for families that currently reside in Austell and Mapleton to become homeowners. Renters in my, in the Mapleton-Austell area make up between 30% to 40% of the community. The rent for apartments in the area start out at $600 a month, up to $1,200 a month, and that's apartments in the Austell-Mapleton community. Another point to add to that is that every school in Austell that feeds to South Cobb High School, as well as every school in Mapleton that feeds to Pebblebrook, are Title I schools. If you're not familiar with the Title I definition, Title I means that students that receive free or reduced lunch. Some of the schools are at 70%, but I do know for Riverside, which is Riverside Intermediate and Bryan, Bryan... and Bryan, Bryan and also Riverside Primary, that the percentage of Title I students that receive free or reduced lunch is well over 80%, okay? So therefore, I want to also find out and also address some issues pertaining to housing that are manageable for families that are single-income homes, and also becoming a homeowner in the Austell and Mapleton area. If there's not a housing council in place, I would like to suggest one, and also find out how I could be a part of that, so that we can create realistic pathways for home ownership in the community. In order to stabilize the community and attract businesses, we must work with the families that are currently here, and not just build $400,000 homes that are not in reach for the majority of the community. Thank you.
Monica, just hold on, we have some information for you in that regard. Go ahead, Commissioner O'Connor, thank you.
Monica, I just want to let you know, yesterday, actually, I had a great meeting with Michael Murphy and Ron Siphon to go over their ideas on how to get more affordable housing in Cobb. And so, we talked about some of their ideas and kind of expanded that, and I believe that they're going to be having meetings with the rest of the commissioners to talk about the same thing, so we are working towards your goal.
Great, thank you.
Actually, I already had that meeting, sir. And I will also put you in contact with Marvin Shams, who hires up our Housing Authority Board. So I've got a note here to send an email with that information and everything, so I think we're all on the same wavelength here, it's just a matter of now getting everything together here and see what we can do.
Good deal.
Okay, thank you, Monica, always a pleasure.
The next speaker is David Birkenbine.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, County Manager, Commissioner. I have word, a problem with three words in the Cobb County Code for outdoor burning. First word is restrictions, second word is ban, third word is prohibition. Prohibitions and ban coincide with each other. Restrictions is, you're restricted to do something, they're totally different. Restrictions, to me, doesn't fall within the ban and the prohibitions. The Section 5412, that'd be on the page two. Subparagraph F, if we can go up to F a little bit there, I got circled. Outdoor burning, it gives a definition of outdoor burning, where you're taking supposedly clean wood, lighting it on fire, but it's, the emissions are emitting into the air. So there we go, the particulate in the air, the medical burn ban and all it changed to restricted burn bans, that'd be the next page. Now, this here isn't in the code, this is on the information that it is put out to people that want to learn about it. Now, the burn ban turned all of a sudden into restricted burn areas. How can it be? I mean, how can a restricted and a ban have two different meanings? Because the medical burn ban was set up for the burning in 1,000-foot radius of the people's property that have a medical condition. Because folks, it affects their medical problem. For the other fires, as far as your recreational fires, your outdoor ceremonial fires, your campfires, you have regulations that they have to abide by to have them, to have them to burn. So basically, when you have a medical burn ban, the only ones getting restricted is the people with a medical burn ban. Everybody else can still burn, which, you know, clean wood supposedly. But the request for medical burn ban area, we want, they want to quote the Section 54-113, and they drop into single-family homes, fire pits, my biggest pain that I have, and others. And then subsection I, burning prohibitions, right there it states, prohibitions. The Fire Marshal shall be authorized to ban, not restrict, to ban. And then, Section 54-115 is an exceptions to the burning prohibitions. So these people, as far as I'm concerned, need to have a burn permit, go into the Fire Marshal to do these pits and these outdoor burning in a medical burn ban area. And we really need to look at this and think about it. We have kicked this can down the road so many years, and I've got a lot of good years left in me, and I'll keep kicking the can back. So I have no other choice. Like I say, this here was personal, and I'm going to see it through and either change it, or have stipulations put in, or we're all going to sit down and me, the Fire Marshal, the Fire Chief, and y'all, and talk about it. Because we're going to have to talk about it. And just like the gentleman said, your population's hitting on to 800,000, you know, we're going to have to do something sooner or later, so I'll be back next month. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Good evening, I'm Amy Barnes, I think we all know. All right. I'm speaking with regards to certain policies and procedures and due process items. Number one, an update on the law library ADA accessibility. I would like to thank the Cobb County Law Office for their participation with me on that. The stairwells are very nicely striped for the visually disabled. The stairwell lighting is indeed wonderful compared to before, and there is better elevator access, so I would like to thank the Cobb County Attorney for that. I think his name is Adelman, excellent guy, and I am very thankful for that. I am concerned that the recommendations regarding the law enforcement in Cobb County, there is a report that was not made immediately accessible. I think that the county should have released it immediately, or as soon as possible, rather than having people raise hue and cry over it in the media. So any kind of recommendation or report that the taxpayers are paying for, I believe should have been released earlier, made more publicly accessible. And regarding a potential source of litigation, I would like to have the county address in order to avoid bad things happening. I read the news of the drug whisperer officers, and it deeply concerns me. I do work in criminal defense. When we have one person after another after another saying that this process somehow does not work, that we have people effectively making a sort of diagnosis, if you will, based on, shall we say, judging a book by the cover, that is an issue that must be addressed. Because they will not stop drug whispering people into jail accidentally or via oversight. If somebody cannot be proven to be high or under the influence, and they come back out of jail freshly innocent, it will result in litigation. And if it continues, it will be proven to be a systemic pattern. So I do believe we need to look at the policy and procedure regarding these drug whisperer officers. Because I can tell you right now, as many lawyers as I know, there are at least some of them looking at this, not in a very nice way towards the county. So I urge the commissioners to please look into these drug whisperer officers, and look and see what you have to do to adjust procedures, so that perhaps instead of jail, perhaps these police can instead issue a citation and let someone go into, say, an Uber or a Lyft, something to avoid the heavy, fierce, harmful penalty of arrest. If it's not a blow DUI or a blow marijuana DUI, and it's not proven right there, if it's just an assessment, they ought to be ticketed and released to an Uber and their car towed. There should be a de-escalation of force, per se. So I'm just saying this out of concern for, number one, people who face these so-called drug whispers and are innocent, and number two, for the county on a financial level. I certainly would like to thank you all for your assistance with regards to that. And the other last item I have to discuss is the fact that we do have some officers with paths that are not very good. I have internal affairs files running two inches thick on one particular officer, and it's quite confusing to me when I don't hear about any of these officers who have caused trouble being fired. I have just seen on paperwork the shifting from department to department. So I would like to see something happen to enable the public to be able to trust the police more, to trust the commissionership, and know that their government is willing to do the very necessary and hard corrections work. More on that later on, I will contact the commissioners about it. Thank you very much, y'all have a great evening.
Thanks, Amy. Any more speakers? Okay, thank you very much for everyone addressing the board. We'll now go to Tab seven, right? Tab six, all right? And as we saw, we added Tab number six, I'm sorry, Tab number 19 to Tab six, that was approved to be submitted to consent agenda. So at this time, I was going to make a motion for us to authorize, to accept the consent agenda as presented and revised. And authorize the chairman to make, actually, all necessary documents to carry out the agenda. All right, now we have a second. Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero, thank you. All right, now we're on to Tab number seven. Tab number seven, okay. With that, Steve?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. In 2008, we'd begun construction of the South Cobb Tunnel project. The tunnel bore portion of that project went very well, a deep, hard rock tunnel, 27 feet in diameter, about five and a half miles long, 200 feet deep. The bore itself was finished in about three years. It transports wastewater to a new influent pump station at the South Cobb Wastewater Reclamation Facility. Construction of that new facility was also part of the contract, it didn't go nearly as well as the tunnel construction did. But here we are, some years later, and we're now prepared to accept the influent pump station, the South Cobb Tunnel, and finalize the dollars on the contract. With that having been said, I would ask you to approve Change Order Four to the contract with Shay Taylor, Shay Trailer Joint Venture Group for the South Cobb Tunnel in the deductive amount of $7,918,759.15, which will result in a total savings on the contract of just in excess of $9.6 million.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The amount that we're deducing this by is not a small number, and Steve, we'd just like to thank you for all of your effort to bring us to this point. That motion to approve as presented.
We have a second in discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Tab number eight. And we have, hello, Jim?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. We have 10 items tonight. The first item is to approve a contract with Integrated Construction and Nobility for Burnt Hickory Road sidewalk. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2011 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $63,821.95 from Integrated Construction and Nobility, Inc., was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The completion date for this project is 30 consecutive days, 30 consecutive calendar days from the issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Integrated Construction and Nobility, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $63,821.95 for Burnt Hickory Road sidewalk.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Yes, sir. Mr. O'Gorman, will you make a note and tell me the length of that project, because the map I have is still incorrect?
400 feet, sir.
400 feet, yeah.
400 feet.
Okay, so just a note that the map that presented, I think, in the agenda is incorrect, so motion to approve is presented.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number two is to approve a contract with Suncoast Restoration and Waterproofing, LLC for rehabilitation of the Concord Road Covered Bridge. Bridges and Covert is an approved component in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $802,959 from Suncoast Restoration and Waterproofing, LLC was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The scheduled completion date for this project is 150 consecutive calendar days from issuance of notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Suncoast Restoration and Waterproofing, LLC in an amount not to exceed $802,959 for rehabilitation of the Concord Road Covered Bridge.
Commissioner Cupid?
Still moved.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number three is to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City Marietta for resurfacing a portion of Burnt Hickory Road. Resurfacing is an approved component in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. The lead role in this project will be taken by the department, as the majority of the resurfacing will occur on county-maintained portions of this road. The city will reimburse the county for the cost to resurface the city's portion of the road in an amount not to exceed $247,444.43. We request the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City Marietta in an amount not to exceed $247,444.43 for resurfacing a portion of Burnt Hickory Road located within the city limits.
Commissioner Burl?
Thank you, Senator. I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number four is to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City Marietta for resurfacing a portion of South Park Place. Resurfacing is an approved component in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. The lead role in this project will be taken by the department, as the majority of the resurfacing will occur on county-maintained portions of this road. The city will reimburse the county for the cost to resurface the city's portion of the road in an amount not to exceed $38,641.85. We request the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City Marietta in an amount not to exceed $38,641.85 for resurfacing a portion of South Park Place located within the city limits.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a second, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number five is to approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. for Drainage System Improvements on Lower Roswell Road. Drainage System Improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvements Program. Construction of this project is complete, and Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $2,164 is requested due to variations between the original and final plan quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $2,164 for Drainage System Improvements on Lower Roswell Road.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number six is to approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. for Drainage System Improvements on River Mill Circle. Drainage System Improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of the project is complete, and Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $1,178.75 is requested due to variations between the original and final plan quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $1,178.75 for Drainage System Improvements on River Mill Circle.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number seven is to approve Project Number X 2302-To-Number-O2 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Calix Engineering Engineers and Consultants for Engineering Design of Intersection Improvements on Blackwell Road at Autumn Ridge Parkway. Blackwell Road at Autumn Ridge Parkway is an approved project in the Intersection Improvements Component of the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number X 2302-To-Number-O2 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Calix Engineers and Consultants in the amount not to exceed $99,125 for Engineering Design of Intersection Improvements on Blackwell at Autumn Ridge Parkway.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number is to approve the recommended ranking of the two qualified firms for the engineering design of Mac Dobbs Road. Mac Dobbs Road is an approved roadway improvements project in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. This is a joint project with the City of Kennesaw. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the two qualified firms for engineering design of Mac Dobbs Road, Project Number X 2606, and authorize negotiations for final scope of services and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm, American Engineers, Inc., utilizing Selection Process One competitive negotiations.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Weatherford, yes, thank you.
Second.
And any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number nine is to approve Amendment Number One to the Cobb Framework Agreement with the Town Center Community Improvement District for additional engineering design of Big Shanty Road. Amendment Number One to the CFA with the Town Center Community Improvement District is requested for an additional traffic study required by the county to substantiate the proposal to widen Big Shanty Road to a four-lane divided section between Chastain Meadows and Bells Frey Road. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Amendment Number One to the Cobb Framework Agreement with the Town Center Community Improvement District for additional engineering design of Big Shanty Road.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our last item is concurrent with the previous item. This is to approve Supplemental Agreement Number One for Project Number TR-485-X-2401-To-Number-O2 to the 2014 Master Task Order Contract with Gresham Smith &amp; Partners for additional engineering design of thoroughfare improvements on Big Shanty Road. Thoroughfare and mobility improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. The department has identified the need for an additional traffic study to substantiate the proposal to widen Big Shanty Road to a four-lane divided section between Chastain Meadows and Bells Frey Road. We request the Board of Commissioners approve Supplemental Agreement Number One for Project Number TR-485-X-2401-To-Number-O2 to the Master Task Order Contract with Gresham Smith &amp; Partners in an amount not to exceed $10,860 for engineering design of Big Shanty Road.
Yes, before I make a motion to approve, I'd just like to say that we will also be putting in some much-needed sidewalks for pedestrian mobility to the Bells Ferry Trailhead.
Absolutely.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And now we're onto tab number nine. And Mr. Geese? Hey, Jimmy.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Item this evening is for the Board to approve the final closeout supplemental agreement and change order number one to the contract with Leatherwood, Inc., for the rehabilitation of the Powder Springs Park Pavilion under the 2011 Park SPOLOST Program. This project included the utilization of the pavilion's original octagonal design and building materials similar to those used on the original structure. These improvements are providing a significant benefit for park visitors. Therefore, we're asking the Board of Commissioners to approve the final closeout supplemental agreement and $11,260 deductive change order with Leatherwood, Inc., for the rehabilitation of the Powder Springs Park Pavilion.
Commissioner Cupid?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Tab ten. Hey, Sharon.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. The GIS Big Data Project will allow Cobb County's Enterprise GIS systems to integrate and analyze large volumes of data from multiple outside sources, including Waze and Cobb County's Automatic Vehicle Lodification System. We've had a previous public hearing on this, but as part of the Big Data Project, hardware and software will need to be procured, and Cobb County's current GIS applications will need to be transitioned to a new web GIS to take advantage of the latest web mapping technology. The GIS Big Data Project is an eligible project program under the 2016 SPOLOST. Business Technology Transformation is an approved project of the Support Services Technology Improvements Work Program. Funding is available in the 2016 SPOLOST Technology Improvements Program Fund for the GIS Big Data Project. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of professional services from Latitu Geographics Group, LTD, in an amount not to exceed $84,535 for the GIS Big Data Project. Authorize procurement of associated hardware and software in an amount not to exceed $246,522. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. And we have property management, Eddie?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. This evening, we'd like to ask the Board of Commissioners to consider approving Supplemental Agreement Number Three in the amount of $24,750 to the contract with Controlled Access Incorporated for additional security system upgrades and building modifications at the Cobb County Building Aid located at 100 Cherokee Street. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
First of all, I would like to say that I'll be happy to see the automated doors return.
Yes.
Especially when your hands are full. I would like to make a motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eddie. Okay, now we're going to tab eleven.
Drumroll, drumroll.
What I would like to do is, no, not taking a break, nice try. In the resolution that we, I just want to make everyone understand, sort of read into the record, and I believe it's already in the resolution, might make sure that both the audience here tonight and those who are watching on Cobb TV, that there was the county and Mr. Hosack will mutually desire an employment agreement through December 31st of 2019. Everybody understands that. It's very critical that this employment agreement would go up for about two and a half years. And with that, I make a motion to accept, I make a motion to accept the resolution as proposed and revised to remove the interim title from Mr. Hosack's name and approve the employment agreement and further authorize myself to make, to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Okay?
Second.
Any questions, any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero. Yes, I think so. It's, that was probably the fastest interim in the history of Cobb County, perhaps.
Really?
But as you all know, we're, Mr. Hankson did a great job in mentoring you and leading you to where we are today, and as I said before, his legacy goes in the fact that he has brought somebody up of your caliber and competence, and I know that you'll lead this county into the future, just as he did for his twenty-plus years. So welcome aboard, Don Robb. Now we can go to number twelve. And we have one point, Tony?
Yes, Chairman, Chairman and Commissioners, earlier this year, the legislation passed House Bill 553, which was signed by the governor on May the second, and it was to amend an act and provide for an executive assistant appointed by and under the direct supervision of the clerk of state court. In order to implement that provision, we asked the Board of Commissioners to reclassify an existing position of administrative assistant in the state court clerk's office to executive assistant to the clerk of state court effective May the second, 2017.
Okay, Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero. Thanks, Tony. Okay, do we have any further speakers, Ms. Debra? Thank you very much. So with that, I believe we have one appointment tonight, and I'd like to announce the appointment of Mark Wade, the Electoral Advisory Board, post number four. And this appointment is to fill a vacancy in post four, and he does not replace anyone, no record. And with that, I'll go to Commissioners' Public Address, and I believe tonight I'll start with Commissioner Cupid.
I was gonna say no comment, but in spirit of the holidays, just want to encourage everyone to take time to remember those who've lost their lives in service to our country. That everybody have a great evening.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. And I second Commissioner Cupid's comments. This is Memorial Day, and we need to take in account and enjoy ourselves, but those that went before us give us that honor and right and privilege. And I know there are going to be multiple opportunities to celebrate this weekend, and I want to quickly talk about a few of them. I know that Acworth at Cobble Park will have one on Saturday at 10:00 a.m., and they will be honoring the veterans that are in local senior centers and senior facilities. American Legion Post 304 will be escorting them to that event at the lake. And then afterwards, Gabriel's at the Old Mill will be feeding them, so that's a great event on Saturday. And on Monday at 7:00, Kennesaw will have their service at the Kennesaw Cemetery. So try to attend one or all of those, and again, remember the reason for that. I would also like to mention that the Cobb Pile Program held its second annual soccer camp on May 8th and 9th, and the second-day camp yielded fifty kids ranging from ages eight to seventeen. The weather was great, and the camp went off without a hitch, and we saw some great smiles on the faces of the kids and the parents. And this is a well worthwhile program. We want to thank all of those that participated, from the police department and volunteers in the community. So that is our Cobb Police Pile Program. And on a more somber note, we had an officer, David Cutler, of Precinct Two, just recently responded to a domestic dispute. It was actually this afternoon, and at the location, the parties began to fight with Officer Cutler and another backup officer in one of the points. They were fighting with two officers with four suspects. They were able to win, but Officer Cutler was kicked in the head by one of the suspects, and he was transported to Kennesaw, and we wish him best, and hopefully there'll be further injuries. So it's just one of the things that we do in our police department that are not known all the time. And this afternoon, Chairman Boyce, Commissioner Burrow, Commissioner Ott, and myself had the privilege of going down to the Capitol and honoring those Cobb officers that helped in the theft of the electronic voting equipment. And here's a picture of them with Secretary of State Brian Kemp. So it's another great honor for a police department that we think is second to none. So thank you to all that keep us safe and those that gave us this Memorial Day weekend. And finally, one last thing, I will be having a meet and greet on June 6th from 3:00 to 6:00 at Cobb County Farmers Market at Lost Mountain Park on Dallas Highway. Be a chance to see the Farmers Market, we're gonna set up a tent with some things that are going on in Cobb and West Cobb, and a chance to interact with staff and myself and see what's going on in my district. So thank you, sir.
Commissioner Weatherford, Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you. Ms. Dance, you might want to set the timer. I have a lot of announcements tonight. Okay, I guess Medication Disposal Day is first. There's a picture. This past weekend, we held Medical Medication Disposal Day at the Superstation. This was part of the Great American Cleanup for Project for District Three, and the Great American Cleanup offers opportunities for communities to clean up their parks, trails, recreation areas, increase recycling, and reduce waste. So you see here, Officer Nick, oh gosh, was it Nick?
Who's in the middle? Is that a suspect in the middle? Are you under arrest? He's been arrested.
It's right here in front of me. Nick Leoni and Sergeant Vinnie Verola, they were, these drugs and take-back program have to be supervised by police, so they were on duty on Saturday. I was out there Saturday morning, saw a lot of folks. We collected 234 gallons of sharps and over 700 pounds of medications, pills, medicine were also collected. So thank you to the community for your support and bringing out, instead of flushing these down the toilet, for bringing these in and to dispose of in a safe manner. And also, thank you to the Keep Cobb Beautiful Board and staff members and volunteers and the officers here that you see in the picture, and to all the public that came out in support. I'd also like to say thank you to Zaxby's on Sandy Plains for donating 15% of their proceeds from the day last Thursday, May 18th, for the Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets Programs. We appreciate your kindness and generosity, and it was a huge success. Also, congratulations, first of all, to Mr. Hosack, welcome as our new county manager. Glad to have you, look forward to working with you. And also, his son Beau is in the audience. We'd like to recognize him for being here for support. Thank you, Beau. The KSU men's golf team is headed to the NCAA Championships scheduled for May 26th through the 31st at Rich Harvest Farms in Sugar Grove, Illinois. Congratulations to KSU Men's Golf, and good luck. And you saw the picture earlier that Commissioner Weatherford addressed, we, our officers were honored today for their excellent work in investigating the theft of the polling equipment and received Outstanding Georgian Award from the Secretaries of State's office. So we're grateful for their hard work and dedication that they give us every day. Also, this morning, we had groundbreaking ceremony at the airport for the donation of a park in, aviation park at the airport from the Town Center CID. Once it's built out, it will be a Cobb County Park in District Three. Finally, I get a park. And it was a, it was a great event today. With the weather like it was, it had to be moved inside to a hangar, but it was a great event, and we appreciate our partnerships with the Town Center CID. You heard about the East Cobb Quilters Guild? The show is Thursday, June 8th through Saturday, the 10th, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and there are cards in the back with more details and tickets information, and hope you will join us. It is a great event, and you won't be disappointed, I can guarantee. Okay, I too would like to say Happy Memorial Day to everyone. Be safe, and please remember those that served our country and made the ultimate sacrifice for us. So with that, I'm finished with the second lift.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Ott?
My name is Chairman, I just have two. The first one is to remind everyone that our special elections are not over. There is one more on June 20th for the sixth congressional district, and early voting begins on May 30th. So if you want more information, go to cobbelections.org. For the next one, I'm gonna remind the chairman and Commissioner Weatherford they can keep their seats. Headquarters Grand Army of the Republic, John A. Logan Commander in Chief, General Orders Number 11.
Orders Number 11, Washington, D.C., May 5th, 1868. The 30th day of May, 1868, is designated for the purpose of strewing with flowers or otherwise decorating the graves of commanders who died in defense of their country during the late rebellion, and whose bodies now lie in almost every city, village, and hamlet, churchyard, and land. In this observance, no form of ceremony is prescribed, but posts and comrades will in their own way arrange such fitting services and testimonials of respect as circumstances may permit. We are organized, comrades, as our regulations tell us, for the purpose, among other things, of preserving and strengthening those kind and fraternal feelings which have bound together the soldiers, sailors, and marines who unite to suppress the late rebellion. What can aid more to assure this result than cherishing tenderly the memory of our heroic dead, who made their breasts a barricade between our country and its foes? Their soldier lives were the revelry of freedom, to a race in chains, and their deaths the tattoo of rebellious tyranny in arms. We should guard their graves with sacred vigilance. All that the consecrated wealth and taste of the nation can add to their adornment and security is but a fitting tribute to the memory of her slain defenders. Let no wanton foot tread rudely on such hallowed grounds. Let pleasant paths invite the coming and going of reverent visitors and fond mourners. Let no vandalism of verrietts or neglect, no ravages of time testify to the present or to the coming generations that we have forgotten as a people the cost of a free and undivided republic. And if other eyes grow dull, other hands slack, and other hearts cold in the solemn trust, ours shall keep it well as long as the light and warmth of life remain to us. Let us then, at the time appointed, gather around their sacred remains and garland the passionless mounds above them with the choicest flowers of springtime. Let us raise above them the dear old flag they saved from his honor. Let us in this solemn presence renew our pledges to aid and assist those whom they have left among us a sacred charge upon a nation's gratitude, the soldiers and sailors' widows and orphan. It is the purpose of the Commander in Chief to inaugurate this observance with the hope that it will be kept up from year to year while a survivor of war remains to honor the memory of his departed comrades. His earnest desires the public press to lend its friendly aid in bringing to the notice of comrades in all parts of the country in time for simultaneous compliance therewithin. Department commanders will use efforts to make this order effective by order of John A. Logan, Commander in Chief.
I just have one comment. Tonight, I believe is the last night. Sheri, you still here? Tonight, Mrs. Sheri Kell has made the hard but correct choice between family and a job to spend time with a credibly talented young man. And I know that this has been a hard decision on her part because I know she's been having a lot of fun most days, but the reality is, is that no matter what happens, even on our best jobs, you know, we leave and we're forgotten, but our family always remembers us, all right? Especially our children. So I wanna wish you nothing but the best in the future with your family, Sheri. You've represented us in a way that are beyond words, and we wanna wish you nothing but God's speed and blessings in your future, and you're always welcome back here. So, thank you for all you've done for Sheri. And with that, I don't believe I have to add anything to what Commissioner O'Neal just said. We're adjourned.[1488.83]